This is budget workshop number one, fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget presentation. Pat.
Yep, so like we've done previous years, gonna walk through the budget here, gonna start on high level and then get more.
You want to roll call?
Can I do the roll call?
Sure, do roll call.
All about Andy.
Palmas. Thorstensen.
Here.
Woodside. Ross. Garner.
Here.
O'Brien.
Present.
For present.
That's why we didn't do roll call.
So again, start at high level, get more specific from there. Brian's gonna start out here, start walking us through it, then we've got the department heads here that'll review each of their individual department budgets for the upcoming year, then we'll run through the other funds, pass the general fund, wrap up with just a high-level review of capital, probably go about an hour or so, and then break for food, whatever we don't finish up, before that hour, we'll pick back up at the end of the regular business meeting. So with that being said, I'll kick it to Brian to get us started.
All right, thank you, Pat. Just walking through kind of the budget document here, we'll hit some key figures and stuff along the way, try not to repeat ourselves, I won't take the thunder away from the department heads here, let them do most of the talking, but first section you come to is the mayor's budget message, this is mayor to the residents, so the highest level here, kind of strategic priorities for the village, just some notes, no property tax again, healthy reserve levels, low debt burden, low cost of water for Jawa, again, I've said this multiple times, second lowest outside of Olo, senior discounts, continuing those for the water, GFOA award, we've applied, received it every year since oh seven, continuing to overfund pensions, continuing to fund the capital grant, the small business capital grant programs, and then institute some advisory committees or continue some advisory committees as well. After that, we get to a bullet point list, really, this was new a couple of years ago, it's called what's new, basically in the budget, so tries to just bullet point list the cost drivers in the budget. Did it, broke it down by department this year, again, you'll hear it from the department heads and division heads here in a little bit, but they'll talk about personnel, technology changes, tax-based changes in here, operating efficiencies, any strategic plan initiatives and program changes, like the sidewalk program, the tree program, things like that, any funding changes for those kind of items, that'll be outlined in here, nice bullet point list, again, all these will be covered as we pass the mic here in a little bit. Next section is the transmittal letter, this is from Pat to the mayor and village board, so this gets a little more detailed in the budget overview section here, goes over the budget, kind of a high-level overview, priorities and initiative, really ties what's in the budget to the strategic plan, there's a good section in here, we'll talk about, on the next slide, factors affecting the budget, talks about fund balance and bond rating, and then kind of the planning and reporting elements, how we go into there, and again, highlights the GFOA award. Wanted to take a little bit of time and talk about this section, because it kind of gives us an idea of what we're facing from a budget standpoint, in the transmittal letter here, factors affecting the budget, a couple of things there are pointed out in here is rising healthcare costs, as you know, the village is looking at going from a model of self-funding to a group insurance model, or government cooperative, also leveling the playing field, this is that internet sales tax act from a couple of years ago, that it is expanding this year to include more retailers, more out-of-state and online retailers, so positive on the sales tax side, it'll take away some use tax, but overall, not positive to the village. The grocery tax repeal, which is effective January 1, 2026, from a cash basis standpoint, it'll only affect one month for next year's budget, so we'll talk about some things to do there midsummer, water main replacement, we've talked about, we have some big water main replacement coming up, that's kind of more of a long-term issue that we needed to start dealing with, LACOM, talked about that, that's the countywide dispatch consolidation, obviously, that's a big one, in conjunction with the apprentice program, rollback of tier-two benefits to tier-one, there's a bill in Springfield, that's currently in committee, rolling back some of the benefits for tier-two folks that went into effect in 2010, rolling some of those benefits back to tier-one, which increases unfunded liabilities for those folks, for the village, the village has to make that up, no idea what it would cost, again, still very early in the process, but something we gotta keep an eye on. Again, low debt burden, and then retaining efforts on the village's part to retain and attract businesses, whether it be through incentives, or small business capital grants, things like that, that's important, obviously, with the sales tax base and the revenue base that we operate from. Next section is really just kind of overview material, some org charts, some demographic information, talks about the budget process, the basis of budgeting, differences between the audit and the budget, fund structure, financial policies, and then a glossary there. Then we get into the budget overview section, the first one you come to is the executive overview, and then we get into the numbers a little bit, so just wanted to take a minute and go over this chart, this is a simple chart, proposed revenues and expenditures for fiscal year '25, '26, wanted to focus on the far-right column, which is the net surplus or deficit, so this chart, just really looking at that far-right column and note where we're using fund balance and why. Overall, net use of fund balance, 3.1 million, using 990,000 of the 911 fund balance, that is closing out this fund because of the new joint dispatch. MFT, these funds are restricted, so it bounces up and down, using a small amount there, 38,000, PD restricted revenue, again, these are restricted funds, bounces up and down depending on the needs of the police department, using a small amount there. Bigger amount, capital improvement fund, this is surpluses that we've transferred over the years, savings in different programs, gonna use some of that, 6.9 million, drawing that down, water and sewer fund, drawing that down by 3.3 million, again, stuff that's built up over time, fleet services, drawing that down by 499,000, again, same thing, built up over time, better prices on vehicles, it's accumulated in the fund, we can use that as kind of a relief valve for the general fund at times, so. Next financial chart, that's important, this one, this kind of shows a little bit longer view, but ends with what's left in the fund, so ends with the fund balances, I highlighted two columns on this chart, the first one is a proposed transfer, surplus transfer to the general fund to support the capital programs, we talked about 4 million from the general fund, 2.75 to the capital fund, and 1.25 to the water and sewer fund, got some recent bids that we'll talk about more in a few slides here, that we may change that up, or recommend changing that up, but the far-right column is really where I want to focus on this chart, and this shows us where we anticipate the fund balance being at the end of next year, so at the end of '25, '26. General fund, projected to be at 33.4 million, 73.8% of expenditures, less transfers, so just over our fund balance policy of 60 to 65, right where we want it to be, again, we'll look at surplus transfer when the next year's audit is complete, to support next year's capital program, fiscal year '26, '27, I guess, program. MFT will still have almost a million dollars in it, even after drawing that down a little bit, PD restricted, about 172,000, the economic development fund, which was new this year, will have 785,000 in it, again, this is something that we can let build up a little bit of a balance, that if some kind of economic development opportunity comes up, we need to pull the trigger on it, we have a funding source. Capital improvement fund, even after drawing it down, over 6 million will still have 2.1 in there, golf course fund, 515,000, again, that may change depending on what we do with that transfer, we'll talk about in a little bit, water and sewer fund will have four and a half million, that's 41.7% of revenues, again, here, you want to be careful how much you keep in there, so target 35 to 40% of revenues, health insurance fund is negative, part of the driver to go look for another alternative here, so hopefully, we can get that back to zero over time, ultimately, that balances off the general fund, so that 584,000 will end up balancing off that 33.4 million. Fleet services, 823,000 in there at the end, even after drawing that down by 500, and then the ETSB fund, again, ETSB and 911 funds close out at the end of next year, so those will be drawn down to zero. Another important chart, personnel obviously drives most of the budget, over 50% of the overall budget and 70% of the general fund, so this is really the driver for expenditures, just hit these quick, and then we'll go into more detail and where the changes are, budget FTEs, 260.65, that's up 17 and 1/4, it's important to note that, once consolidation is complete, that the overall FTE count will come down 24 and 1/4, so keep that in mind for next year. Unbudgeted FTEs, we do maintain some unbudgeted positions to help with backfill, overlap in certain positions, just maintaining the positions, even though there may not be an intent to fill anything, we have 13 of those, total authorized, for a total authorized of 273.65, just over 73% is public safety, 14.2 in public works, and then roughly 12% in administration and community development, also have a number of contractual employees in various departments that assist full-time staff. With that, we'll get into the departments and talk about, just a little bit about personnel changes in each one, so admin is the first one, admin has, obviously, the administration, cost center, economic development, finance, HR, IS in here, a couple of the unbudgeted positions we just talked about, the IS technician, and the assistant IS director, again, just maintaining those, no plan to fill those. We are looking at one addition for next year, and that is an accountant position, and that is in relation to succession planning for the HR director position, looking at taking some, essentially, taking some accounting, finance work off of the assistant director of finance and HR, short term, so you spend more time in the HR realm in anticipation of that, so bringing this person on to take that, really, just the accounting-related duties, obviously, everybody in finance is gonna have to share that burden, but really, the finance, accounting work is what we want this position to look for. Ryan's gonna talk about recruitment here in a minute. David?
Okay, so on the community development side of things, we are adding another half-time contractual code enforcement officer, that person should be rolling on sometime this spring, had a little bit of a delay due to some pension complications, so that one should be rolling on later on, and then we're also trying to fulfill the final civil engineering recruitment position, we've had, we gained one, and then we lost one within a couple weeks of each other, so we're still looking for an additional position at this point, but we're hopeful that we'll get that position filled here in the near future.
Just like Brian mentioned, too, as we anticipate the consolidation of LACOM, we're gonna lose 24 full-time employees, and we're anticipating that to happen between May and July, demanded, to manage the numerous responsibilities beyond answering the emergency calls, we propose the police apprentice program, which I previously discussed at the committee of the home meeting, this program includes seven police apprentices and one additional record supervisor to provide the necessary 24/7 coverage. The apprentices will be full-time employees with a starting salary around $40,000, plus village-funded tuition, it's about 3,200 per semester at CLC, the total estimate cost is expected to be under 500,000 for those seven. Additionally, we're looking to add a licensed clinical social worker to our team, and while the COAST program has been very successful, its grant-funded model presents challenges, limitations with the salary, has frequent turnover with the social workers, so hiring a dedicated social worker would provide stability and help meet the village's growing needs for all of our mental health calls, a large percentage of all of our calls has some dealing with mental health, so it makes sense to incorporate that, and this role would extend beyond just follow-ups, like a lot of police departments have, because we're gonna be adopting the co-responder model, which a social worker would accompany an officer on active mental health calls. While Keegan currently has that, but theirs is grant-funded, and then Lake Forest, Buffalo Grove, and Mundeline all employ in-house social workers, so it may seem like we're adding quite a few, but we're losing 24 around July time frame.
So with the fire department, it looks like we're adding six additional people this year, to bring us back to last year's budget, we actually had them in for the last two months of 2024, through our hiring, there's no way we're gonna bring them on board, so we've gone ahead and pushed that back to potential of September of this year, we're hoping to fill those spots, that being said, we're looking to hire four in the next month, which will bring us right to staffing without any retirements, we have a few scheduled retirements, so though these six positions are there, and this would be important for us to get that fifth ambulance on the road that we've been working on for the last three years to do, we purchased the ambulance, everything's in place, the personnel still are a while away, we're working hard towards it. We currently have nine people with less than two years on, we have six under a year, and just with training and bringing everyone up to speed to get them through certified paramedics, to be able to ride on the vehicles and all that, it's quite a bit of work, so as much as you see six additional added in here, that's gonna be a partial year, and that's at best, we're hoping to pull that off, and we really need to get that ambulance, we'll talk later, you know, we said another record number of emergency responses last year, so the importance of getting that, and we've got some more ideas for recruitment, so. The other position that we're looking at, one of our battalion chiefs is looking at retiring, he's also our lead mechanic, he works back, if you've seen the payroll, he works back probably at least one to two of his off days, eight hours a day, so we were able to take that overtime dollars that we've been paying him, and put a public safety mechanic position in place, very important for us to keep our vehicles up and running, we have a fleet that people are jealous of because of our preventative maintenance program that we have, that he's implemented, he's looking at taking this position, he's happy about going to the position, he's been with us on shift for over 33 years, getting up in the middle of the night, going to calls, as well as being our mechanics, become a little much for him, so we've kind of worked together and created this position, we really think it's a positive, he's planning on being in it, you know, three to five years at least, we see it being something that will probably carry on in the future beyond that, but he's committed to us pretty strong there, so it's an important position for us to fill, and I think it's crucial that we budget for it.
Thank you. So in public works, currently, we have 31 full-time staff and two permanent part-time staff, we also have three positions that are on budget, as you can see on the slide, which helps facilitate when there's upcoming retirements, so we can backfill before people leave, and they can kind of get trained up a bit, we also have a bunch of seasonal staff that we bring in in forestry and in utility over the summer, which leads to some of those summer helper line items underneath each respective grouping there, and in recent past, we created a permanent part-time locator position that helped offload the larger demand of utility locates that typically takes place during our busy season, which is the spring, summer, fall, although it's been very helpful, it doesn't assist when it comes to snow calls and having someone out on the routes to drive a plow, so this year, I've requested to eliminate the permanent part-time position, and instead replace it with a full-time maintenance worker one in the utility division, so it's a net positive of 0.25 people.
Jumping back into the numbers here for just a little bit, looking at funding sources, so this is revenues across all funds, expected to finish the year at 110.23 million, that's up 11 million, remember, some of that is also the $4 million transfer that we have included in the year-end. Next year's budget, 101.4 million, that's up 2.3 million, or 2.3%, 52.7% of all revenues come into the general fund, 16.8 into the pension funds, 10.7 in the water and sewer funds, 8.9 in the internal service fund, so that's health insurance and fleet services, fleet services and health insurance are both funded by inter-fund transfers, there's a little bit in health insurance for employee premiums, 5.9% of that revenue comes into the capital fund, 4.8% in a bunch of different special revenue funds that we've talked about, and then small amounts into the ETSB fund that we only anticipate being open for a few months, and then the golf course fund, which gets amusement tax deposited back into that fund that they generate. Again, sticking with all revenues across all funds, major revenues, so sales tax, food and beverage, amusement, hotel, income tax, and use tax makes up 42.1% of all revenue, charges for service, 20.4, investments and contributions, this includes our pension fund contributions, 18.8%, fund transfers in, so this is the revenue side of fund transfers, almost 11%, and then taxes, intergovernmental, just almost 2 and 1/2%, fines and forfeitures and licenses and permits at 1.4, and then other sources is really miscellaneous reimbursement type stuff, that's 0.4%. Taking a deeper dive into major revenues, this is across all funds, but if you remember, there's only half of the home roll sales tax goes to the capital fund, everything else will be in the general fund here, so primarily the general fund, anticipate year-end estimate, 43.3 million, that's up 2.3 or 5.7% from budget, next year, '25, '26, total budget of 42.6, so you can see we're a little bit more conservative than the year-end estimate, that's up 1.7 million, or 4.13%. Sales tax, we're looking at a budget of 27.2, that's up 5.7%, a million and a half, again, that was fairly flat from this year, we went down just slightly, budget next year to be conservative, amusement tax, held flat, 4.2 million budget, that's up 450,000, 12.2%, food and beverage, we also held flat, $2.9 million budget, up 200K or 7 and 1/2%, when I say held flat, held flat from the year-end estimate, so where we think we're gonna finish this year, held it flat for next year. Hotel tax, same thing, 2.4 million, that was flat, budget, income tax, just slight increase, local use tax, we expect to go down again, that's the sales tax piece, internet sales tax, coming back as home roll sales tax instead of use tax, but again, a net positive for us. Looking at the expenditure side, across all funds still, 50% of everything is related to personnel, so salaries and wages, 36%, employee benefits, 14%, contractual services, 13%, you'll see some of the road resurfacing program in there, capital, 11.3%, the expenditure side of fund transfers, 10.3%, other financing uses, 5.3 professional and technical services, contractual services, 3.6 and 2.5 respectively, small amount for supplies, and then debt service at 0.5%, so just a tiny debt service amount across all funds. Looking specifically now at the general fund, before we get into the departments, so general fund revenues, anticipated to finish the year at 54 million, major revenues at 37.6, up 2 million, you'll see next year, 36.9, so again, we were just brought it down slightly to be conservative, primarily sales and amusement tax, outperformed, charges for service, 9.5 million, expected to finish the year, up 382,000, that's ambulance and off-duty PD, next year, we'll budget for an additional off-duty police contract that we picked up this year, so that'll be included in next year's budget. Next year, revenues 53.4, up 3.6%, major revenues up 3.9%, fund, that's from budget, so this is budget versus this upcoming '25, '26 budget versus '24, '25 budget, so major revenues, up 3.9%, fund transfers in, up 300,000, that is 100% the 911 fund closeout there, so just transferring that back to the general fund. Taxes are up, that's just a change in the road and bridge tax, that's levied by the township, and then the county disperses it to us, investments and contributions, 1.5 million, that's up 145,000 or 10 and 1/2% there. General fund on the expenditure side, expect to finish the year at 53.6 million, up 2 million over budget, it's important to note that that includes a $4 million surplus transfer, so without the 4 million, we're actually 2 million under. Salaries and wages are under a million and a half, employee benefits are anticipated to finish under 228,000, salaries and wages number, again, we budget conservatively for that, assuming all positions are filled all year, that gives us a leg up when we get to the end of the year and need to set that capital transfer to maintain the capital program and hit the marks we need to on the road, and get close to get something in water and sewer done, so. Again, important to note, $4 million transfer included in the year-end estimate, fiscal year '25, '26, budgeted at 53.4 million, up 3.6%, salary and wages are actually down, 310,000 roughly, that's just the shift from LACOM, you see it up in the professional and technical services line there, up 1.1 million, contractual, Jeremy will talk about, or sorry, deputy chief gone will talk about a lot of the things in here that drive that number, up 644,000, other contractual, 633,000 up, and then fund transfers out, down 672, and that's primarily a little bit lower fleet, and a little bit lower for the economic development fund. And with that, turn it over to Pat.
Sure, so we'll transition into departments now, I would just echo what Brian said about the what's new in '25, '26, that's on page eight of the budget, I mean, a lot of that, there's good information in there that drives the numbers, that was actually a recommendation from trustee Thorstensen a couple of years ago to get that all in one place, so previously, we kind of had it spread throughout the budget, now we've got it in one spot, divided up by departments, so I think there's some good information in there, so administration, so this is village administrator's office, HR, finance, and then economic development personnel, budget is up 12% compared to this current fiscal year, majority of that is the accountant position Brian referred to, as well as adjustments that were made, this current fiscal year related to the non-bargain compensation study. This current fiscal year related to the non-bargain compensation study that the village board approved. Fund transfers out is also up, and that's the health insurance fund. You'll kind of see that across the board of departments. The remaining categories in administration fluctuated up or down by less than ten-thousand dollars. Looking at that two-point-five-million-dollar budget, so one-point-nine million of that is related to personnel, about two-hundred-thousand for professional and technical services. So that's like the village attorney, the audit fees, codification services, one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand contractual services, so that's mainly related to computer hardware and software expenses, one-hundred-thousand other contractual, which is mainly made up of bank fees and liability insurance, and then just a little under two-hundred-thousand in the fund transfers out, which is the health insurance that I mentioned before. Looking at some results from last year, so recruitments. Recruitment's for police, fire, and telecommunications, I don't think has stopped for the last three, four, five years. That's all Christine's been working on, recruitment after recruitment. She's enlisted Erica to help out with some other positions, like Brian said, or David said, actually looking for some engineering positions, still working on the information systems network administrator position, then also recruiting for summer interns across village staff. So been busy with recruitments. A compensation study I mentioned, we got that knocked out last year for the non-bargain. Had GovHR help us with that to make sure that we're where we should be in the market to retract and retain people. That's been greatly appreciated by the non-bargain group. Dispatching and consolidation, obviously heavily involved in that myself, Chief Smith, DC Gahn, Chief Kavanaugh, Brian from the finance perspective, spent a lot of hours on that, communications supervisor. Again, a whole team effort on that. Next year, and again, Brian's mentioned some of this, the transition from self-insured to the pool for health insurance, the accountant position, new resident and business account portal. So we do have the Eye on Water portal that's available, depending on the resolution of your meter, for people to go in there and check their water usage, set alarms for usage, et cetera. So working on pushing that information out. Finance is also working on a new portal for businesses to file and pay their locally-collected taxes electronically, so that'll help improve some efficiencies, reduce paper, speed things up. Ellen continues with the new businesses, obviously working to recruit new businesses. Had some exciting developments this past year. I think we've got a couple of exciting ones here that we'll be talking about in the next couple of months. The Village Hall update, so as you know, got the HVAC knocked down for the most part. Next up this year, we've got some money in as far as just paint and carpet, and then also looking to probably work with potentially FGM Architects that we use for Fire Station Three, just to get an interior designer in here to look at the building as far as just the blinds, the paint, just to try to give it a refresh, which would be, if that pans out, something for the following fiscal year, so for twenty-six, twenty-seven, so twenty-five, twenty-six, possibly look at what we could do, and then the following fiscal year, potentially budget for it. But buildings from ninety-two hasn't had makeover since then, and it's starting to show its age a little bit here in different sections. Included some additional funding for community events. So as you know, this past year kicked off the block party grant program. That was a huge success. Worked with the Park District sponsor a couple additional concerts in the park, had the East Side get-together, so continuing to build upon that. Working with the Park District right now to look at their schedule. Would be a partnership again with them to see when we could slot some events in. They've got a pretty busy season coming up, so they're kind of looking at what's already in place and then what dates are available, probably targeting some Thursday night events based on what they've got already plugged in. So there'll be more to come on that. Ellen and Matt are working on that. And then again, continue with the commissions. So the ESC and the Veterans Commission, that Austin's been the staff liaison for, Trustee Thorsonson, they've done great work, very positive results. A couple of new commissions with our commission that they had a kickoff meeting last week, had a pretty good turnout, so there's lots of interest in that. And then the CARES Commission, that'll be following shortly afterwards. So plug some money in the budget in case some ideas come up on those. Obviously, anything substantial will be ran past the village board, but the commissions have been popular, there's been a good response in the community. There's a desire out there for those residents to get involved, so working to support them, where it makes sense, and bring some of those ideas to life, so.
I think it was on, dude. All right. So I'm sorry. I want to start out by thanking the mayor, the board administrator, Pat, department heads, and staff for their support after Director Velkover's retirement at the end of May. Chris's dedication to Gurnee's technology needs knew no bounds, and it's an honor and privilege to step into his role. Jumping into a review of fiscal year twenty-five, shortly before Chris's retirement, the network administrator position became vacant and our remote part-time contract was ended. So in a very short period, we kind of were unexpectedly down a statistically significant two-and-a-half-person headcount in our department. The network administrator position remains open. We've had many solid entry-level applications submitted. However, I have been steadfast in trying to find a candidate that can have some success with the current or existing project list. You know, to bring somebody in at entry level, they're not going to be able to step into some of the projects that are literally waiting for the role to be filled. So I appreciate Christine and Erica's ongoing efforts on that front, and as Director Gosnell pointed out, those unbudgeted positions are still there, and there are no plans currently to fill them. But on a positive note, in August, Sean Diatte joined our GIS section as a GIS analyst. Sean came to us from Hoffman Estates, and working with Eric Vanden, he was able to hit the ground running, already making his presence felt in our GIS program. And then in October, we were able to bring retired Police Sergeant Michael Mann back onboard as a full-time information systems analyst. Mike was eager to work in technology after his career in law enforcement, and so he made an immediate difference in the backlog of, say, security patching and to-dos from our Arctic Wolf security vendor, among other things. But that was one of the first things. It was huge. We had a whole bunch of things waiting for him. The consolidated CAD-RMS project went live in April, but Infosys wasn't done then. We were able to negotiate an excellent agreement with Comcast for fiber connectivity into that ETSB network. That will move over to the regional center as that comes online. The order was placed in September, but the fiber build wasn't completed until January. Network was turned up in February. Today, the network is operational as they work through the automated fire dispatching system, and then CAD and RMS traffic will actually transition to that this month here in March. Our department completed various data storage projects this year. Full replacement of storage systems at Public Works in support of SCADA. We doubled the size of primary enterprise storage at Village Hall and Police Data Centers. All of it was with no downtime. We've talked about it in the past, the server hardware project kicked off in early 2024. Nine servers were replaced. That represented the core of all server processing for all the village departments. Concurrent with that, Broadcom's acquisition of VMware resulted in highly unfavorable licensing terms, so it kind of expanded that project into where we could reduce the reliance on VMware and sort of introduce some other server virtualization systems. System administrator Jeff Dishno did an excellent job incorporating new hypervisors into our network, and all that stuff is up and running, again, with limited downtime. Last year, I talked about plans to improve our overall security posture. Email continues to be the number-one method of system compromise by bad actors, and our Mimecast email security implementation was a major win on that front, not only reduced spam, but sandboxing for attachments and a whole bunch of extra security features. Absolute fantastic program. And then, of course, we continue our monthly touchpoints with the managed security vendor, Arctic Wolf, implementing practical action items that they bring to us every month. I want to touch base real quick on the HVAC system construction. That really brought some unique heat-related challenges to my department at the end of summer. Temperatures in that Village Hall equipment room effectively reached the thermal capacity of the equipment. With some effort, some help from Nick and Pat, we, everything survived, which is good, and we're in a much better place now. So I actually thank the board for that support in moving that project forward. But moving into twenty-six, so early in the budget process, I asked Director Gosnell if we could create a new account to separate tracking of our cloud product subscriptions from our internet fiber and cable connectivity contracts. The account previously titled Network, I'm sorry, Cod Network Services is now been separated into two accounts, and the goal there is to provide better reporting visibility into those annual software subscriptions. And the reason for that is that the traditional software purchase for licensing and then maintenance continue to move to subscription terms. It's an industry trend where any license changes, say, in existing purchases, if there's capacity or new users added, it may effectively force you into that subscription model. You can't buy the old stuff anymore. You have to go over to the subscription. So we have a couple of new examples coming in fiscal year twenty-six. The first one is our Esri GIS platform. That's going to move to an enterprise agreement, ending our traditional maintenance cycle, and in this case, it grants us access to a larger suite of products and features through that subscription model. So we actually get something out of it. In an upcoming board meeting, I'll bring a purchase authorization for the Microsoft Cloud Services. This will be a major initiative for the IS department in fiscal year twenty-six, and the project will probably encompass most of the year. The rollout will start with an implementation of Microsoft Entra ID Directory, and this is a required management tool where end-user objects, computers, and applications are defined and connected together. This is where we introduce multi-factor authentication, network access rules, all those security features that we need when we're turning up a cloud product. Once that Entra ID is configured and integrated with our on-prem solutions, then we can get into the application rollouts, the things that we're all actually excited about, right? The new versions of Office, the Outlook Exchange, online email. I talked a little bit about the timing of that last year during this meeting. The Office product would go in spring of twenty-five, and then email to follow. I think that we're a little bit later than I planned, but generally on track. With that, our current application and PC management suite is from the same product family as Groupwise, so it's a legacy application. One of our goals for this current year, twenty-five, was to evaluate and determine a new product for patch management. So through product demos and technical evaluations and the buildup to the Microsoft Cloud Services product bundles, we settled on the Microsoft tools to manage our Windows environment and then cellular phone and tablet mobile devices. So all these products together will close our traditional maintenance contracts with Novell and OpenText, change our Microsoft traditional licensing just a little bit, close our contracts with BlackBerry, and modernizes our productivity endpoint management kind of across the board. Along with the cloud infrastructure update, and then a website rollout that Austin's going to talk more about, we'll be introducing a new .gov internet domain name for websites and our email addresses. CISA is the federal government cybersecurity agency. They manage all of .gov, and the purpose of .gov domains is to build a level of trust with visible internet addresses, so only CISA-vetted government agencies can get a .gov. There's no commercial presence there. There's no hackers are buying .gov domains to sort of redirect traffic. So it's not yet active, but we have approval for gurneeil.gov. This fits the model of Lake County il.gov and other communities around us. We don't have a lot of leeway in the domain name, so I decided that we should take the default route there. But this will eliminate the village police, fire, and a whole bunch of dots that are in there simplifying that. But what this means is we will maintain gurneeil.us kind of in the background for continuity purposes, right? We need to have, we have a lot of twenty years of gurneeil.us out there. So we're going to make sure that the systems that exist today are still accessible in gurneeil.gov, and then as we get those moved over, make sure the regression testing works in both directions. And then lastly, I just want to touch on the maintenance impact of cybersecurity. While there's certainly security-specific products that are part of an overall cybersecurity solution, good cybersecurity posture isn't necessarily a single item that we purchase, a box or a firewall. It's not an application suite. It's staying current through the software subscriptions I've talked a little bit about, and then replacing hardware, say, through like the capital plan. Those are examples of building blocks for maintaining a secure infrastructure. If systems are not patchable or maintainable, they can't be readily secured. I apologize for missing the capital presentation in December. That program, we have core network equipment, endpoint devices, so backup solution changes, all that support this goal. But here on the operating side, an example of this is the Windows 10 end-of-life in October. We've been preparing for this for multiple budget cycles now. We're almost there. The last remaining Windows 10 major group that we have is the mobile data computers in the police department emergency vehicles, and that's represented in the police Infosys hardware line items. I appreciate your continued support of these overall programs, though, to help keep these things up to date. So I don't only speak for myself, but also the rest of the information systems staff. We're very excited about these projects in fiscal year twenty-five, and I thank you for the opportunity to provide a brief overview of what we got going on. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Do questions at the end, I think.
Okay. So for the public information division, we are down a little bit, but that doesn't mean we don't have a lot of big things ahead of us next year, and accomplished a lot this year. So for this year, we managed fourteen communication channels. The content for each of those was planned out through twelve monthly communication plans, one strategic communications plan for the LRS transition. These plans consisted of approximately sixteen-hundred messages being planned, posted, and sent by the communications team and myself. For social media, this resulted in a year-over-year engagement increasing twenty-nine percent on Facebook and eighteen percent on Instagram. That engagement really means the way that people have interacted with our comment, our content, from commenting to liking, to sharing, to posting and viewing videos. Two big things we're currently in the progress of working on is the community survey that was carried out in January. The results should be before you tonight. The ETC Institute will provide a review of the results at a future village board meeting. And then the business survey has been drafted and will be sent out in the next month or so. And additionally, this year, we produced eighteen special features. These are the Keeping Post, the State of the Village publication, other things you've seen in the village newsletter. They're educational and as well as informational. So with that, as we move on to fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, we plan to launch a new website. Provider has been identified by myself and the communications team embedded by IT. Has much more intuitive design and advanced special features. We'll have that at the next village board meeting for your review. Well, you know, one thing, as I got the survey data back and we began this budget process, that we learned is that residents reported that they rely on, almost eighty percent of residents reported that they get their information from the newsletter. So with that, we wanted to begin doing bimonthly newsletters. The cost will be similar in terms of printing, as we're going to scale down the quality of the paper and page numbers, but basically get in front of the residents more frequently and in a timely manner, since we did find out that almost eighty percent of residents get their information through the newsletter, or reported that. We plan on implementing an advanced mass notification system. This will replace Blackboard. One big key feature of this is that it will allow police department and emergency personnel to send out messages to people within geography of Gurnee that aren't registered within our system. They might just be visiting Six Flags or Gurnee Mills and could get an emergency message. So that's one function of the system. But the system also sends out email, social media, text, telephone calls, and, you know, we also learned from the survey that the second most, or even the most, if you put it together, the two data points, is that people prefer to find out about village stuff through email. So this system does have a component of email, and with that, I plan on trying to basically go through the residential data on what emails we have and trying to get information out that way. But residents will have the ability to opt out at any time if they so choose to. So that's really it for communications.
Okay. Thank you. So on the planning and building safety division of community development, the proposed budget is up three-point-six percent from current year, modest increase based upon the one-point-six-million-dollar rough budget. As you can see in the pie chart, the vast majority of it is salary wages, employee benefits, fund transfers out for insurance, slight increase with the professional technical services for our additional part-time code enforcement officer, and then the rest of it is just operating expenses for staff. operating expenses for staff. Some highlights from this past year, permit value was down about just shy of 20% with three months remaining over the same nine months last year. Part of that is the three AR Homes apartment complexes that are being built down on 21. We alerted the builder that there were some upcoming changes with state law as far as EV chargers for apartment complexes, and it would be beneficial to them if they were to get the permits early. So they went ahead and did that. All the permits were received in the last fiscal year, but the work has continued on. One building is nearing completion, one's midway, and one is, I think, just has the elevator tower done. So we kind of front-loaded a little bit of that, which made our numbers last year look really good, but this year, they're a little bit softer. On the other side of that, our zoning projects, we had processed about 50 zoning projects last year compared to 40 in the year before. So staying pretty busy on that side of things as well. Some of the items that we're looking to complete this upcoming fiscal year, the 2024 code updates, we've been working on these for a while. I've got five of the eight codes pretty much complete at this point, ready to process, get the remaining three analyzed and updated and ready for presentation here in the next couple of months. Target is to have those in front of you in May of this year with an effective date probably July 1st. One of the other tasks that I'm hoping to take on this year is reevaluating the permit fee structure. We last did that for residential in 2018 and commercial in 2019, just doing a kind of a reevaluation as to what our costs are for processing permits, and then bringing those to you for any adjustments to those permit fees. When we did it last time, the residential, on the residential side, new construction was basically at cost, and then anything that had to do with existing residents for remodels, for accessory structures or things like that, we applied a 40% discount on what our costs are to process those permits. So we'll look to do something along those lines again. Another item, we're always looking for ways to make our processes a little more efficient, large format drawings, the largest building permit plans that we receive in. At the completion of the project, we always want to have those digitized so we can scan those into our files and keep good records. It's a very labor-intensive process to tear apart the 100-plus-page plan sets and scan them in a page at a time. I did my very best, and I got about two pages per minute. So that's about the record speed that we can expect back there. But labor-intensive, we typically are doing it, you know, at the end of the day or something like that. So what we're going to try to do is do like kind of a deposit system. So as, you know, large plans come in, pay a deposit with your building permit. At the point that you provide us the digital record set at the end, we'll give the deposit back. So a little bit of finance work on it, but hopefully will save us some time and money on the backend. As I pointed out earlier, we're adding an additional code enforcement officer that will be later this spring, and then we are also working with IT to provide iPads for our planning and zoning board and pushing digital packets for our planning and zoning board this fall, or this summer and fall. So seeing kind of as a test case, seeing how effective that is, and hopefully reducing some of the paper waste that creating multiple copies of those packets has associated with it. So moving on to the engineering side of things, the engineering budget is up slightly, 8.4% or 6% over last year. Once again, a fairly modest amount on the million-dollar budget that we've got there. Once again, salary and wages, benefits, and the fund transfers out for the insurance comprises the vast majority of this budget. Some of the highlights that we've had this year, Nick has been very busy with his team, completed the largest street rehab project in the village's history, and we're going to up it this year. They also completed a water main reconstruction replacement project along 21, and overall has been a little bit under budget because of employee turnover. For next year, '25, '26, we've got major water main projects planned for Stony Island area. We've got a sewer extension project planned for quality acres, and like I said, we're going to be bumping up the record-breaking resurfacing reconstruction roadway project and getting it up to just shy of seven and a half miles of repaved, resurfaced streets. And then along with that, we've got several pedestrian improvements that we've got planned and slated for this upcoming fiscal year as well.
For the, excuse me, for the police department budget for fiscal year '25, we finished 1.5 million under budget, primarily due to salary and wages from employee turnover. Excuse me. Our supply line was a little over budget at $45,000 due to additional speed signs that we put across the village in the last few months. Some of the results from fiscal year '25, personnel changes and staffing. If you remember, about four years ago, we were at an all-time low with about 45 to 46 police officers that could patrol the streets because of COVID and civil unrest, which means every officer was working just about every single day. With the help of the HR director, we're currently at 69 sworn officers with the ability to reach 74. So we do a staffing study every two years based off of how many calls we get and 24 million visitors, and we're right there where we need to be for the village as far as staffing goes. The visitor-oriented policing team, it's currently, we have two uniformed detectives back into that, that was gone for quite a while because of our short staffing. The goal is to get to five officers, two teams, and a sergeant for each team. So we're working on that. Our public education, we have a new public education specialist. You'll be meeting him at the board meeting today. He'll be bringing Mira, the six-month-old black therapy dog that we have now that accompanies him, has been a big success in the schools, at least the initial visits and with the employees. So a great addition. Public and the retail, the traffic safety, we deployed 23 digital speed signs in various traffic areas throughout the village. We installed 17 out of 21 flock cameras around the village, so we have three more, or four more pending iDOT permitting. Otherwise, pretty much every entrance into the village gets scanned by a flock camera and gets notified if there's any issues. The wellness room that we have completed this year, it's used daily by the employees, and it's currently being implemented by our annual mental health wellness check. So we have a mental health clinician comes in, spends about an hour with each employee at the police department. So normally, we would have to send that employee either to Chicago or to Lake Zurich. So now they come to us and they go to the wellness room, so we're saving money by doing it there. So that's worked out pretty well. Fiscal year '26, the proposed budget, $21,288,000. It's 1.4 million increase from fiscal year '25. The key increases, salary and wages are up $411,000. This is the police apprenticeship program and employee benefits at $215,000. Contractual services, $458,000. That's increased cloud-based software I'll talk about in a second. Subscriptions like the in-car cameras, so our new in-car cameras from Axon, they actually have flock built into them. So as the officers are driving around in their squad cars, and they're going past different vehicles, either in front of them or going past them, it's always scanning them and giving immediate feedback to the officers if that vehicle is stolen, if the person is wanted. So a lot of success with that. Drone as a first responder program, I'll talk about that in a second. And then our supply, $112,000 for training in schools for new employees and mobile phone expenses. One of the things that we've realized is that we're one of the few police departments that does not issue mobile phones to employees, just the supervisors have them. So what comes, the problem that comes into play is that everything is going to two-factor authentication, which uses your phone, and along with officers out on scenes that are sending messages or taking pictures, all that is subpoenaable. So along with having a, the officers getting their own phones, the expense is not in the phones, they're actually free, the expense is in the data, service, thank you. So we were able to actually implement one of Axon's apps with that, where the officers on scene, instead of having an evidence technician go out and take pictures of certain things, they're able to actually use their work phone, take the pictures, and updates onto the Axon server that we have in evidence.com, and photos get instantly uploaded. And it actually saves us on paying for data storage, because anything taken with those pictures with those phones doesn't increase the usage, and we pay for a lot of data for Axon. Supplies are up $64,000, that's due to changing out squad car computers. And then our major initiatives for fiscal year '26 include the building improvements that I talked about previously with the door control systems, making sure that those are all updated as we consolidate our dispatch. The community room refresh, that is just about complete, and that is one of the rooms that's most used with the community over 300 times a year, so it looks really good in there now. The public safety technology portion, we're looking at drone as a first responder. So Paladin is the company that we're looking at. And so what this does, it's a box that goes on top of the police department. The box is heated and cooled, and as an officer, there's a drone that sits in it. As an officer gets dispatched to a call, we're able to drop a pin on a map, the drone automatically goes out of the box, straight out to the call, and then as the officers are heading there, they can click on their laptops and see exactly what's going on at the scene. So whether it's a fight at the park, at a park, or it's, they're going out to a traffic accident, or maybe it's, it doesn't matter what it is. The drone is out there, it's over top within less than a minute, they're able to see it as it goes out there. Once the officers get on scene, they're either able to take control of the drone from a remote in their car, drop it, put a new battery in it, or fly it around, and maybe looking for a missing kid. Or when the drone gets tired, it returns back to the top of the police department, lands, recharges, the box closes, waits for the next call. So we're pretty excited about that, to get started on that. Austin talked a little bit about the regroup messaging. We were researching that last year to make sure that we have found a solution so that when there's a critical incident in a town that gets 24 million visitors a year, we're able to send out those mass messages for any type of critical incident. You know, one of the things that we found with Blackboard that we use right now is that you have to have, you have to subscribe to it. So, you know, we only have 3,000 or 4,000 people that maybe subscribe in a town of 30,000. When we have to lock down a school or lock down an area, we're not hitting really anyone in that area. So this allows us to ping off cell towers, almost like you're getting an Amber Alert for that area. So we're excited to implement that shortly after May. Draft One and Axon Redact, this is some of the increases with the contractual services. So what this does, Draft One specifically with all the AI stuff going around, we're, you know, we're not shying away from it, we're leveraging that technology for the officer's use. So Draft One, what that allows us to do is we have test piloted it for about two months. Officers go out, they go to a call, everything's recorded on their body cam like normal. By the time they walk back to their car, the body cam is uploaded like it always does, but this time, it not only uploads it, it transcribes the entire incident. So a use case for it is that they were trying to find, somebody had a cellphone for, it was evidence in a case, there was six officers that went out to the scene, each officer's body cam video was an hour and a half long, they would have to go through each one, the detectives, to find out who located that. All they had to do now is type in cellphone, and it drops right down to the officer and the person that was involved in it, and they can click on it and go right to the scene. So that's not even the best part of it. What it does is it actually transcribes it into a police narrative. We're trying to make it very easy for the officers, and we're taking away any learning, evidently, that goes with this. So it transcribes it into a report. So Axon is all about police usages. So what this does is it puts it in a police report format. The officers have to go through, they have to go and look, and they have to certify as they're going down the report to make sure that the report is accurate and reflects what they've heard and what they've seen. There's spots in there where the officers will add different descriptors about what's happened, and it even allows us to put in there a fake sentence to assure the officers see it. So the unicorn had three horns, they have to actually delete that sentence before they can forward that on to the next reporting approval authority. So with that, we have tested that out, and we have only used it for non-arrestable offenses right now. And we had 20 officers doing it, and so with just the small amount of non-arrestable offenses just in the last month, they save between 30 and 40 hours of time. So what it's doing is they're going in there, instead of, the goal is, is to have a two-hour DUI report dropped down to 20 minutes, and then the officer's back on the road. So it's saving a lot of time. It's technology in lieu of manpower is what it is. So with that, we also get Axon Redact, and what we had that, we test-piloted that for the last two months. And what that does is that is artificial intelligence for our FOIA officer. And as you know, we get bogged down with FOIAs all the time, because it doesn't matter if it's a YouTuber that wants videos, or if it's somebody that was involved in the crime, they have to go through each video, they have to redact juveniles, they have to redact juvenile names. So with this, not only can he put in redact screens, so normally, he has to go through and redact the screen that the computer in front of the officer that might have leads information on, an officer's cellphone, any type of screens. What this does is a one-click of a button, it automatically blacks that out, it puts a box over the face of the individual so that when they're walking around, the box stays on them. It also allows them to, if somebody says Jeremy is the juvenile, we have to redact him, it'll, you type in Jeremy's name, if it was said during any of the videos, it automatically finds it and redacts it. So we're finding that it is saving hours for our FOIA officer. And then one of the last features is our translate feature, which comes out in port two with Axon. And what that allows the officers to do with our good body cams is that when they're out on a call, and no matter, in one of 118 languages, they're able to push a button on their body cam. As the person talks, the body cam will beep and it will say it's Farsi, and then it'll repeat whatever that person just sent you back in English. And then you hit the button again, and you talk home in English, and you hit the button again, and it talks back in Farsi to that person. So basically, it's a officer's personal translator in his body cam. And with all the AI stuff, it basically transcribes it at the backend, so when he goes back to do his report, it's all transcribed for him. So a lot of exciting technology that we're hoping that will reduce manpower and get officers back on the road a lot quicker. Moving on to communications, fiscal year '25, the budget protected, finished slightly under 3.4 million, with savings primarily in salary and wages and employee benefits. Results from fiscal year '25, staffing was, it was hard on communications also, 17 full-time employees and two part-time employees currently. We have two full-time communications operators that successfully completed training, three full-time communication operators that were hired but did not complete training. So we have three vacancies right now, and Molly's working to get those filled as we start to, in a few months, to transition over to Lake County. For training and career development, we sent all of our communication supervisors to leadership training, and then anytime that any training comes up that's available for communications operators, we sent them so that they're in the best possible position when they go to Lake County to make sure that they get employed there. We're sure that our dispatchers are the best trained in the county, if not northern Illinois. Emergency fire dispatching, EFT training began in October. All the communications operators are still in that certification process, and they're expecting that to go live sometime around April. Text to 911, that has went live, and we're awaiting a final carrier, which is JV Global, to onboard, otherwise, all the other carriers are onboard for text to 911. And as soon as that last carrier comes onboard, then we're going to advertise it and make sure it's put out there. But we have received 10 emergency texts to 911 so far, and that's without putting it out there that it's available. Countywide CAD RMS, we're still going with the ongoing implementation, with just a major update completed just in the last week. They're continuing collaboration with different vendors to resolve any issues that we have with that. For fiscal year '26, total budget is 2.5 million, reflecting an 890,000 decrease from fiscal year '25. Net reduction accounts for communication center employees remaining with the village only until about the end of July. The professional and technical services is up 966,000, and that is the additional Lake County fees for a partial year impact. Major initiatives for fiscal year '26, Starcom radio upgrades. So currently, our Starcom radios are going end-of-life, and we purchased new ones, and Molly is helping with transitioning to these and Molly is helping with transitioning to these new Motorola radios. And like everything that we're getting right now, their technology plays a big role in it. So these new radios, as officers walk into, whether it's a school or Gurnee Mills, sometimes we have radio issues with the tower. These will automatically flip to cellular. So you could use it probably anywhere in the country and still have, as long as it has cellular. And it also has a Wi-Fi feature where we can build in like 20 Wi-Fis if we thought that the antenna or the cellular wasn't going to work. And then it also has a large screen on the back of it, which has GPS on it. So as our officers are out there, all our officers are on GPS on their radios. So just an example, if an officer gets in a foot chase with somebody or we're setting up a, supervisor only needs to take the radio out, look at the back of the radio and see where every officer is at. Even the officer running through the woods chasing somebody because they're all on that screen on GPS. So it's a great officer safety tool and it's some, some really great technology. Physical retaliation with Lake County is the last thing. They have a very ambitious hire date to hire everyone by May 1st with the building completed, targeted for July. So we're staying on top of that, the fire chiefs group and the police chiefs group and all the rest of the groups to make sure that we can address any potential issues. So that I will pass on to the fire department.
Yeah, so let's break at this point. Just because we're always rushing to eat quick before the board meeting. So this will take 20 minutes and I know Janet will talk much longer than that. So we'll save him until the, after the record of the board meeting. We'll just have fire, public works and run through the individual funds. So it shouldn't take too much longer at the end of the village board meeting, so.
Sounds good.
So food and caption.
The Gurnee Village Board Regular Meeting of March 3, 2025. Roll call, please.
Balmis.
Here.
Thorsonson.
Here.
Woodside.
Present.
Ross.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
O'Brien.
Present.
You all stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a foundation, a liberty, and justice for all.
First item is approval of consent agenda as presented.
Second.
By trustee Balmis, second by trustee O'Brien. Roll call, please.
Balmis.
Aye.
Thorsonson.
Yes.
Woodside.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion carries. Pat?
Act Number One, Approval of Ordinance from the February 17, 2025 and February 24, 2025 meetings. Act Number Two, Approval of Ordinance 2025-07, authorizing the purchase of software and product licenses from CDW Government LLC and extension of Cisco Flex subscription with Cisco Systems. Act Number Three, Approval of Public Works Department Recommendation Award to 2025 Salt Dome Roof Rehabilitation Project to Lowbitter CPR Roofing, Inc., at a cost of $85,000. Act Number Four, Approval of a One-Year Contract Extension with Alpha Building Maintenance Services for Janitorial Services, 3% price increase. Act Number Five, Approval of Police Department Request to Allow K-9 Officers Tom Yensitz and Travis Hitzelberger to Attend the 11th Annual International Police K-9 Training Conference in Las Vegas, Nevada, from March 11 through 14, 2025, at a cost of $1,476 Northern Illinois Police Alarm System to cover the remaining $2,319.36 in expenses. Act Number Six, Approval of Payroll for Period Ending February 21, 2025, in the amount of $1,039,225.41. Act Number Seven, Approval of Bills for Period Ending March 3, 2025, in the amount of $489,746.43.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Motion by trustee Garner, second by trustee Ross. Roll call, please.
Balmis.
Aye.
Thorsonson.
Yes.
Woodside.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Six A.
Motion carries. On to most important item of the night, right?
Where is she?
Introduction of Police Department Comfort K-9, Myra Joy.
All right, well, I thought we were going to have a crisis there for a second. She, of course, had to go to the bathroom right before we started this. Kind of goofy with the table, so I'll work around a little bit. Obviously, very exciting. The importance of the budget process to the village goes without speaking, but introducing Myra Joy to the community, our police department's first comfort dog, is very exciting for us. So Myra comes to us. She's a little bit over six months old now. And for those of you that don't know the backstory to this, this was something we really looked at about six years ago. We really started talking six years ago, introducing a comfort dog, a therapy-type dog, to the police department, to the community, and the timing just wasn't right. And so, fast forward to 2024, and we hired a public education specialist that had retired from the police department in a dual role for public education and wellness, as a wellness coordinator. And Chad was the right guy for a comfort dog. And so, one of Chad's first one of his first projects was to go out and find us one. And so, he worked on it for quite a long time, and we were fortunate to find a company called Partners with Paws out of Wisconsin. And they are a service dog company that trains service dogs for police departments and veterans. And they've provided, I think, what, five dogs now to Wisconsin Department? Six?
Yeah, six or seven.
And we're the first Illinois department that they provided a dog to. So we're very excited to introduce Myra Joy to the to the community today. This is Chad, as previously mentioned. He's our public education specialist and wellness coordinator. And Myra Joy, who has just just started her training about a week ago, week and a half ago, and so she's got a little road ahead of her. But the benefits of a comfort dog to the department is part of our growing wellness program is really important, just the effect that a dog has on you, as it walks around the building every day and goes to see everybody. And we like to joke that it boops it boops you with its nose. You just can't help but feel better. But she obviously plays a greater role in the department, being available for critical incidents for the officers and for the staff, to the community for critical incidents, for families that we see benefits of having her respond. And then the educational aspect and the relational side of having her at community events with us, having her in the schools, visiting the schools, visiting different businesses, and the welcoming feeling that you get with having a dog and the role that will play in building relationships, strengthening relationships, and tying that all into wellness on both the community side and on the employee side. We're really excited about this. We thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Moots, Village Board, for supporting this as we look to expand our wellness program. And you can see, she's just a very mellow, slightly older than six-month-old puppy that just is very loving, very calm. She has a great personality for this role. And it's really interesting. I don't want to put Chad or his family on the spot, but she's like a completely different dog when she gets home. And she's a puppy. When she walks in the door and she takes off the vest. But when she's here at work and she's got the vest on, she's just really, really chill and very loving. And we've had some great community introductions already with different businesses in town. And so, thank you to the village. Thank you for the support that you've provided our employees and our police officers in the building and the relationships in the building to come in the community. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just also want to say is that the police department has really sprinted out ahead on the wellness end. And I won't promise a dog for every department, but I'll say that we're working on wellness for everybody. I think it's and the fire department has done a good job as well. So I think that Christine really has a challenge of the turn on the wellness. I mean, 10, 15, 20 years ago, we didn't talk about this, did we? I don't think so. I think it was like tough it out. I don't think that's in our language anymore. So looking forward to what the future brings. And thanks, Chad, for bringing, is it Myra or Mira?
Mira.
Mira, sorry. All right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right. No reports, no old business. On to new business. Item number one, Approval of Ordinance 2025.
Zero eight.
Annexing property to the village of Gurnee, approximately 0.21 acres, located at 6161 Illinois Route 132 and 1501 Tri-State Parkway in Lake County, Illinois. Pat?
Sure. So got a memo from our community development director, Dave Ziger, on this. Memo includes a map. If you look really close, you'll see one little section of land here that kind of straddles the former Holiday Inn site and then the Restaurant Depot site that actually isn't annexed into the village of Gurnee or zoned in the village. So years ago, there's a small sewer plant on that parcel, and we didn't annex it at that time along with the Holiday Inn. It was decommissioned in the late 1980s, and again overlooked that, didn't annex it. As you're aware, there's a proposal coming forward related to the former Holiday Inn property, so we felt that it was a good time to clean up this oversight via force annexation. So it's just 0.21 acres. As the mayor read, we'll bring the property in as R1, which is our most restrictive district. And then at a future date, which I think on not the next PCB meeting, but I think the following one, one of the property owners is coming forward to petition the village to rezone the property to match their current zoning classification. So Restaurant Depot South is I-1, former Holiday Inn is C-2, so we expect those parcel owners will come and request each little section that is adjacent to their property to have those zoning classifications. So cleanup item from the late 1980s that we're finally getting around to.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion by trustee Garner, second by trustee Thorsonson. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Balmis.
Aye.
Thorsonson.
Yes.
Woodside.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Six A.
Item number two, Approval of Ordinance 2025.
Zero nine.
Authorizing the execution of the Protect Lake County and Participating Member Agencies Agreement. Pat?
Sure. So I'm going to let Chief Smith explain this one. He'll do it better justice than I will.
Thank you, Mr. Moots, Mr. Mayor, Village Board. As you may recall, about two years ago, I first spoke about a behavior threat assessment type program coming to Lake County. In July of 2022, our crime prevention detective, Sean Galore, was present at the Warren Township Center as we hosted a program out there. Unfortunately, the timing of that was perfect in that it shortly followed the tragic Fourth of July incident in Highland Park. But that was kind of the birth of this. And so, to give you a little bit of background, in 2022, the Lake County Chiefs of Police Association was approached by three universities out of Chicago, the University of Illinois Chicago, DePaul University, and Loyola University. They had been successful in obtaining a grant from the Department of Homeland Security to start a behavior threat assessment type program in the state of Illinois. And with our relationships through Lake County policing, they reached out to Lake County and asked if we would be one of those pilot programs. And so, the work began, I'll call it, two and a half years ago. It's continued to work since then, and we are now ready to come before the board with a memorandum of understanding to begin to participate in this. And so, just a little bit about, you know, what a BTAM is, a Behavior Threat Assessment Program. So it employs a strategic, multidisciplinary framework to prevent violence and effectively address what generally starts out as noncriminal behavior. This can be threats online, threats that are received through social media. We have a very robust program in the schools here in Gurnee that we are very active in. And this is taking that model and bringing it into the community so that we have a community-wide, in this in this particular effort, a countywide program where we have teams together that can look at those incidents, help identify threats that need further investigation, and have a team that can work on that. And so, this has really started to move forward a little bit about. Over the last 12 months, we've come up with the name of Protect Lake County. And the first MOU is signed in December of 2024 by Lincolnshire. And so, we're in front of you today. So, give you a little bit additional background. So, the Protect Lake County will consist of representatives from a bunch of different stakeholders in the community to form a comprehensive collaborative approach to threat assessment and management. Law enforcement, the Lake County State's Attorney's Office, educational institutions, businesses, and social services. Really, the structure is very familiar or should be very familiar. We are a part of a number of task forces that have structures in place that will have an executive board composed of representatives from each of the participating member agencies. We'll have additional teams, case review team that will be comprised of six to eight representatives. They'll review cases, offer recommendations, and coordinate follow-ups. A community resource team, which will identify community-based resources and gaps to help support the case management team, develop a comprehensive resource list for the participating member agencies, and a training and educational team that will assess training needs, identify opportunities, provide education to both participating member agencies and the broader community on violence prevention and intervention strategies. The goal here really is to identify and assess individuals displaying concerning behavior, advise on prevention and intervention strategies, and serve as a centralized hub of information for training and resources. Importantly, Protect Lake County will not operate as a formal behavior threat assessment team like we see in the schools. This is a consultative recommendations-based member agency to help manage these cases responsibly. Couple of key objectives: fostering communication and collaboration among community partners, compiling and maintaining a resource directory for violence prevention and mitigation, offering training on early identification and prevention strategies, developing tools to help identify potential risks, renewing and advising on cases involving individuals. cases involving individuals exhibiting concerning behaviors, and proposing strategies to mitigate risks and reduce harm. This is a significant step forward in protecting residents and fostering a safe community. And so, we come before you today to answer any questions that you may have and to seek your approval to allow us to join Protect Lake County through the memorandum of understanding.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Woodside, second by trustee Thorsonson. Any questions or discussion? Trustee Ballas?
Are the reviewers, what's the title you gave here, are they basically confidential? I mean, so when they work, are they sworn like a psychologist or whatever to privacy?
Yeah, it's a good question. Thank you, trustee Ballas. Yeah, as part of the MOU, and the requirement of the MOU to become part of this group is a lot of this information that they will be working on. And we will see psychologists, psychiatrists, social workers. There'll be a number of folks that are part of these groups. And a lot of that information will be protected information. And so, yes, it will be confidential. The information they collect will be confidential. But the groups themselves will work on solutions to provide assistance, to provide services to the individuals, to help. Again, the goal would be to prevent the next Fourth of July incident from Highland Park. And so, there are signs that are available. You know, there are usually threats that are made. And in getting a group of people together to try to address those, that's the goal of this organization.
So, in a, let's say unsuccessful or whatever, and there was a court case, they wouldn't, it would be like a psychologist or whatever, they could not reveal any of the information?
So, there is a, there would be a piece of this that would be protected information. Again, generally speaking, these things start out as noncriminal behavior. And so, unless it rises to the level of an involuntary-type committal, in which case, that information is not protected because you are sharing information for one of two reasons: to prevent, to protect the person from their death, or to protect somebody else from great bodily harm.
I mean, it sounds like a great program. I would just be concerned about the privacy.
Sure.
Thank you.
Trustee O'Brien?
It sounds like some of it is a think-tank training session for the agencies involved. But what if you come across something that's an imminent threat? Do you meet often? Is there a way to maybe stop something right before it happens?
Sure. So, you're right. This is collaborative and after-the-fact. Information is, you know, I'll give you an example. You know, we respond to a local business in town because they have discovered some concerning information on a computer of one of their employees. The employee works in Gurnee but lives someplace else. And generally speaking, no crime has been committed. And so, the coordination between Gurnee to try to look at that and investigate a noncriminal event, and then coordinate with wherever the person lives for something that was noncriminal, that is a challenge right now. And so, this is to fill that gap. If we were to find ourselves involved in an imminent-type threat, then that would lead to a different protocol response that police departments generally are already trained in.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I have a question.
Trustee Garner.
Can this in any way be used to profile individuals?
Profile by which means?
Well, just used to, like, if someone's in the community and you just have a thought that they may be up to something, and you, this organization just profile them and start to investigate them.
So, this organization in and of itself, this group, again, made up of, so we'll have representatives from each of the police departments that are part of this. And so, if the Gurnee Police Department were to receive a call of concerning behavior, threats that were made online against a particular businessperson, et cetera, then we would reach out to this group to try to help us provide services and guidance to the individual to prevent something. And so, it is responsive to contact. It is not a organization that is out investigating the interwebs, looking for information that some people might, you know, deem threatening. That's not what this is. This is a direct response to a police department's request for assistance based on a call that they have received.
So, this is person-initiated?
It would be initiated, the group would be initiated by the Gurnee Police Department. It would be one of our officers who takes a report of something or gets contacted for something, then we would contact them. Our assigned officer or detective would provide the information that's necessary for the group to then begin to look at it.
But it was, begin with an outside source, an individual making a threat?
Yes.
Otherwise, there's nothing?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Woodside?
Yes, thanks. The name Protect Lake County, I think, is so appropriate for this multidisciplinary approach that you're taking. I mean, this threat assessment model that has been used in the schools, bringing everybody together and having that expand to a county-wide level just makes so much sense to introduce law enforcement and all of these disciplines into, you know, a continuum of care where information can be shared in a responsible way. You know, when you introduce healthcare, obviously, you know, there's information sharing that becomes a sensitive issue. When it was done in the schools, it was a sensitive issue because, you know, the sharing of information between the police department and between the schools is something that, you know, each has their own requirements, rightfully so. But this goes a long way toward breaking down silos and bringing the people together that have all the information, that gives you the opportunity to be able to anticipate and get in front of things. So, I am, I'm excited about this. I think this is a great thing. My question is, how's it going? How, are you lining up partners? Is it still really on the front end, or who's involved?
Yeah. So, we are lining up partners. There are quite a few communities that are interested. The training for the assigned individual officers or detectives has already begun. And so, we already have people identified here at the Gurnee Police Department who have begun their training to participate. And so, yes, it's just a matter of each individual community getting in front of their village and getting approval to join.
Well, I have no question. With your leadership, you'll be able to rally plenty of law enforcement involvement in this. I guess my question really is beyond that, the other disciplines that you're talking about. Has it been rolled out to them yet? And how is that going?
Yeah. So, there have been some efforts that have been made. So, we were involved in a presentation with security professionals from different companies without, throughout Lake County, or the summer of last year. And they've also begun to visit different businesses, hospitals, larger corporations in Lake County to introduce this model and to talk about the service, and to begin to share information with them about what the goals would be, and then bring additional partners on board. So, the providers, if you will, those specialists that will be working have already been identified. They've already, they're already part of this. They've been part of the buildup for the last, or build-out for the last two years. And so, there are a number of therapists, doctors, some research university staff from the three universities that I mentioned that are already part of this and already building.
Ambitious plan. Nice work. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Trustee Thorsonson?
This is really great because I think DC GON presented it to us last August at the public-private partnership at my company in front of the members of the Security Round Table there as well as other police. So, it's awesome seeing this moving forward. Do you, have you presented again to the Northern, I think, the Northern Illinois Security Round Table, all the major corporations in the area and their security management team?
So, there hasn't been an official presentation that was provided to them yet. This group presented to the Lake County Police and Fire Chief Associations in November. The Fire Chiefs and the Police Chiefs do an annual breakfast every year in November where we all get together and we bring training in. This was presented, so just four months ago, to that group as an introduction to the fireside, as the police have been working on this for a while. And so, the rollout is in the beginning stages of active participation. There have been, I think, four instances now in which this group has been used already in communities that wasn't official yet because the group hadn't started. So, there is a need. There's already shown to be useful. But this is the beginning stages of everybody coming together, and there'll be a lot more to come.
Great. There was one other question I had. So, I think at the time, last August, it was like, how does it get invoked? So, it sounds like it's from a call to the police, local police, generally.
Correct.
Okay. Because I think at that time, it was like you could email this group if you had like a pending case, but that's good to know. And the training, is it grant-provided, or how does the training work?
So, right now, the training is all being paid for by the grant and managed through Loyola, DePaul, and UIC.
Terrific. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
Thorsonson.
Yes.
Woodside.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Six eight.
All right. Kerry, thank you, Bryan. Item number three, approval of ordinance 2025.
Ten.
Authorizing a professional service agreement with RINA for engineering services to design and permit the quiet zone at Granville and Union Pacific Railroad Crossing. Pat?
Sure. So, memo from our village engineer, Nick Leach. You might remember, we looked at this a while back, back in 2016, actually. So, we just have one at Grade Railroad Crossing in the village over at Granville 41. As it's currently configured, requires trains to sound their horns as they're approaching the intersection. We contracted with Patrick Engineering, which RENA has absorbed Patrick Engineering, so use those two interchangeably. At the time, to take a look at the quiet zone, they conducted a feasibility study, came back with some recommendations that, when put into place, would restrict truck traffic up there. You've got a lot of 18-wheelers up in there making deliveries to the industrial area. So, their proposed improvements would impact them. So, kind of went back to the drawing board, looked for some additional grant funding to continue to move the project forward. Wasn't able to locate that because it doesn't qualify as a safety improvement. This is more, you know, residential quality of life, trains honking their horns, trying to get them to reduce that. So, plenty of grant funding, had some budget constraints, and then COVID hit. So, the project was basically shelved. Throughout this past year, feedback from the community, this is one of the issues that came back up. So, Nick reached back out to Patrick Engineering, talked to them to request another quote to restart the project. The quote involves reassessing the original recommendations to ensure compliance with the current quiet zone regulations before proceeding with coordination, permitting, design, and necessary improvements. So, you've got multiple agencies that we would have to work with, ICC, IDOT, Union Pacific Railroad, among others. At this stage, this is just to get the plans together. This isn't construction cost or any of that. There would be some work that needs to be done on the private property to the north, right there, MGA, I think it is. We've talked to them. They're on board. But they would need some driveway reconfiguration for trucks to get in there. If this, recommendations and proposed improvements come back, as we believe they will. So, this is to get it going again. The proposal's $127,250. There's some money in this year's budget, some money in next year's budget to accomplish this. So, again, this is to reengage with a consultant and try to move this project forward. So, as a complete third stage, I'm sure we'll be back in front of the board for the next stage to move this forward. So...
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee O'Brien, second by trustee Ballas. Any discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Ballas.
Aye.
Thorsonson.
Yes.
Woodside.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Motion carries on to item four, approval of ordinance 2025.
Eleven.
Authorizing a professional service agreement with HMG, Inc., for engineering services for the Quality Acres sanitary improvement. Pat?
Sure. So, the next three items are engineering consultant contracts. Do you get Nick and his other employee, because there's only two of them back there in engineering right now, some assistance this summer? We keep talking about the biggest capital improvement program of the village's history, and then short on people. So, that would be our luck. First one, as the mayor read, is for Quality Acres. HGM, we've partnered with them multiple times in the past, always been satisfied with their work. Nick reached out to get a quote to assist with the sanitary sewer improvement oversight up there, came back at a not to exceed $100,000. So, like typical engineering consultant contracts will only be billed for the hours that are used. So, this first one is to keep an eye on Quality Acres.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Garner.
Second.
Second by trustee Ross. Any discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Ballas.
Aye.
Thorsonson.
Yes.
Woodside.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item five, approval of ordinance 2025.
Twelve.
Authorizing a professional service agreement with IMEG for engineering services for the 2025 construction season. Pat?
Sure. So, this contract with IMEG is mainly to oversee the road resurfacing program. So, again, over seven and a half miles of roads to be resurfaced and reconstructed in total. Again, have used IMEG for multiple seasons. They know expectations, worked well with them. So, this is a not to exceed for $250,000. Again, only billed for the hours that they use. So, if we don't need to use all the hours, we won't, and we'll save a little money.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Garner, second by trustee Ballas. Roll call, please. Well, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ballas.
Aye.
Thorsonson.
Yes.
Woodside.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number six, approval of ordinance 2025.
Thirteen.
Authorizing a professional service agreement with Soil Material Consultants, Inc., for the engineering services for material testing for the village's resurfacing and reconstruction program. Pat?
Sure. So, state requirements, if you're using MFT funding, you've got to do some soil testing. So, we do this every year. It's got to be done by a certified tester. We have used material and, or soil and material consultants in the past. Again, happy with the results. Nick reached out based on the size of our program. This year, got a quote. When we've solicited multiple quotes in the past, they've always been a little bidder. So, this year, they provided a not to exceed of $36,144 for the necessary soil testing related to both the resurfacing and reconstruction program.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Ballas, second by trustee Garner. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ballas.
Aye.
Thorsonson.
Yes.
Woodside.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item seven, approval of Engineering Division recommendation to award the 2025 sanitary sewer lining service contract to Hor Construction, Inc., at a cost not to exceed $122,000. 2022 Municipal Partnering Joint Bid Consortium, low bidder, 2024 pricing. Pat?
Sure. So, memo from our senior civil engineer, Daniel Salgado, on this. So, this is for some sanitary sewer repairs. So, we've used this cured pipe-in-place process in the past where they don't have to dig up the price. They actually use a liner that goes in there, resin-saturated, and then pulled in the damaged pipe, and then hardens in place after it's expanded with air or water pressure. So, had good results with it to fix cracks in any sanitary sewer pipe where this is applicable. Back in 2022, a couple of communities got together and bid out the services. Hor's construction was a little bidder back then. We subsequently awarded $150,000 in work that year, very satisfied with the results. They have some funding in the proposed budget for next year to conduct another round of this sanitary sewer lining services. So, reached back out to Hor. They agreed to honor their 2024 pricing, which was the 2022 pricing, and then they added 4% for '23, and then 4% for '24. So, an 8% increase over the 2022 pricing. They were a little better back then. Staff felt that that was a good deal. So, I was bringing this forward in a not-to-exceed amount of $122,000, listed some areas in town, Blackstone, Delaney, and then also for... Listed some areas in town, Blackstone, Delaney, and then also for Glendale over along Grand Avenue, some of the spots that they're going to target this year.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Ross, second by trustee O'Brien. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Woodside.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item eight, approval of engineering division recommendation to award the Stony Island Regional Water Main Replacement Project to the low bidder, Campanella and Sons, Inc., at the cost of $1,767,238. Pat.
Yep. So we've talked about this project a couple of times, talked about it during the capital budget presentation, talked about it, just highlighted again tonight a little bit. So this is water main replacement down in the Stony Island area. Nick bid out the project. It totals about 3,800 feet of 8-inch water main, a little over 1,300 feet of 6-inch water main that needs to be replaced down there. We put $2.75 million in the budget, and it came in at 1.8, a little under 1.8, so almost $1 million under budget. So attribute that to just materials being more readily available, and then also bidding this work really early in the season. So we'll probably try to make that, our target going forward is to bid this stuff super early. So Campanella and Sons, a little bidder, obviously have worked with them a bunch in the past. They've done multiple projects, projects like this around the village, always been happy. A million dollars under what we had budgeted, so staff is recommending to move forward with Campanella and Sons at the cost of the 1.767 million.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Garner, second by trustee Thorstensen. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Woodside.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Motion carries. I don't see any member of the public here to do public comment early, so we're just going to roll on to continuation of the budget workshop.
Yep.
No. Shouldn't we just close out the regular, no?
No, keep it going.
I think we left off with you, Chief, with the threat of going long, right? Was that your, I think that was Pat's threat about you.
That was my warning.
That was his warning. My computer won't start up, so you're going to get the short version. And plus, Nick, I think, took care of most of the money just a few minutes ago. So that being said, I'll start with a recap of last year. We were able to hire six firefighter paramedics. We have four in the pipeline right now, 10. A reason I bring this up, to hire 10 people in one year is a lot of work, and I want to thank Christine for this. I can't believe she pulled it off, and the ability to get our staffing levels back up really is going to make, as I go into 2025, '26, some of the things that we've had to put on the back burner, we're able to start moving forward on again. So it's kind of exciting. But that definitely doesn't go without notice how much work that our HR team does and all the work they've done with recruiting and keeping these people online. So it's helped us, it's really made a difference in public safety, so we appreciate that. Last year, we also accomplished the new division chief of training, paid off right away. We've got our first employee through the Fire Academy last year, graduate, doing very well, as well as we hired the other five firefighter paramedics, were not paramedics at the time. He's gotten them all through, they're all state certified paramedics, they're within our system now. So having him in this position where he's working directly at the hospitals, working more often, is really paid off as well. So we appreciate you last year supporting us in that, and that made a big difference. The fire engine that we ordered three years ago showed up, it's in service. It was great. Bob and his team got it up in service in less than a month, the date of delivery, it's running calls, it's doing a great job, it was well needed. We're working on trying to sell the old one, and we're seeing there's not a lot of bidders for that right now. So we're still working through that process, we'll come before you with something on that down the line. The new ambulance that we ordered over two and a half budget cycles ago also showed up early in May last year, that's been in service, that's been up and running, much needed. The ambulance we retired had well over 200,000 miles on it. It's unheard of. We have multiple other ambulances that are approaching or if not over 200,000 right now. Just a reminder, we have one coming in next, hopefully this May, and then we're hoping next spring for the last one. Will be before you, hopefully, as part of our capital program in next year's budget to order one, that they're saying is about 36 months out. So that's why we'll continue to come before you with the plan that we have, using a capital plan. We appreciate that you support us every year with that. We look at that five-year, 10-year snapshot, it's really made a difference for us, and we're starting to catch up, and we're feeling it. On that same thing, last year, we were able to replace all our thermal engine cameras. I went through this a little bit in the Capitol night, but it's really made a big difference for us. The other night, we had a chimney fire right down from fire station number one, up in the roof, an ember came out, looks like it got on the roof. These brand-new tools, they really made the difference for us. We were seeing smoke, but it was very difficult finding where the fire was. But with the thermal engine cameras up on the ladder truck, you were able to come down there, pinpoint, we were able to actually come from the exterior, pull some things apart, do minimal to no damage in the house, leaving the house completely, so they were still able to use and have it all. It really went well. Without that technology, though, those kind of things couldn't happen. We'd have to pull that all apart and start ripping things apart to find it. Now with technology, we're able to leave things intact, it really makes a big difference. So we appreciate you supporting us last year. It was, it was great change for us. As we move forward into this year, you see we're going up just over six and a half, 6.68%. This is mostly personnel and benefits. We talked about that, you know, earlier, about the added personnel between the mechanic and the six firefighter paramedics. The other big thing we have coming up next year, it's our, every other year, we have promotional testing, so we'll have all of our candidates testing for the captains and lieutenants exams. This is quite a long, expensive thing, but it's worth it because we get good quality people in the end, so we appreciate that. As far as recruitment goes, we've, we've created a recruitment team in-house. They've gone out and they've really taken to all the colleges, they go into the hospitals. They're spending time finding people, selling gurney. We're averaging, once every two weeks, someone's coming in and riding along with us right now, who is someone who may be in paramedic class, firefighter, they may not be directly tied to the gurney area, but we bring them in and we let them ride, and we're finding out that we have to sell ourselves, and we have to do this now. And these people are doing a great job. And the good part is, quite often, we have a young candidate that just rode this other day, he's on our list, Naperville's list. And when he left here, I feel real good about that we're moving in a great direction with him. Hopefully this summer, we can see him possibly come and join the team. And I think without that ride along and creating this program and these guys taking the time and effort selling gurney, we wouldn't have this. So we really appreciate that. And again, I have to go back to Christine and thank her for this. She's involved in all this, and she, she always is coaching us and working with us, part of the whole succession planning that she has in place. We're doing a nice job with that, so we appreciate her. Training-wise, the big thing for training this year, up to this point, we've really been focusing on filling our ranks, trying to get everyone up to be firefighter paramedics. Well, most of you know, over the years, we're a member of MABUS, SRT, so specialized rescue teams. We have divers, we're hazmat techs, we're, you know, we do a little of everything. Well, these teams have really taken a backseat, just trying to get our basic training. So this year, we're looking at sending a couple hazardous material technicians to get certified, so they can join the Lake County team. Last year, we did get some of our TRT techs, we want to finish that up this year. That's all the rescue from confined space, high angle, below ground. We're hoping to get two more of them certified, and then we have dive rescue team. We're hoping to send a couple people to dive rescue this year. It's allowing us to get some of the additional training. The service is everyone expects, we've been doing it with a very much of a skeleton crew, we've been getting by, and with retirements, we definitely need to fill these positions. People are getting over their standard, basic trainings, now we're able to certify them. So that's in this budget. The big item that our personnel is very excited about, it's not quite a drone that lands on our own roof, but we're looking at getting new cardiac monitors that integrate well with all of our RMS, our records management systems, they're able to talk to each other, we can get the data pushed right in there, as well as they work with the latest technology medical-wise. And really, that's the most important part. We're able to look at people's hearts from different angles, we're able to see what their O2 sats are, we're able to do all this, and we're actually able to go ahead and make a recommendation on medication usage and all that. And this technology is really what we do. 85% of our calls is EMS, and this is an important lifesaving tool. So we appreciate that you're supporting that this year. The wellness thing, we talked about Station 3 when we built it, was kind of a prototype for us. We found out the bunk rooms, individual, really make a big difference with the sleeping. Station 1, we were able to do last year, we're in the middle of the planning of Fire Station 2 right now, turning those into individual bunks with doors, so they can get a little better sleep at night. This also, we're going to take this project and also look at redoing the front office and the community room there. This is the one room we use for our community events. It's very, very dated at this point, it's getting rough. So we're looking at doing that over the next two budget years, those two projects combined, and that'll go a long way for us. The fifth ambulance, this really is, not only the physical ambulance, this is staffing that ambulance, getting on the road every day. That's the people we talked about in September that we need to hire. We've been working towards this, and this really will go a long way. When you talk about the wellness and health, reducing the calls that the frontline ambulance is going on, having someone to back them up, and us not waiting for a neighbor to drive into town to back up our ambulances, our engines. Because remember, all our engines are ALS, advanced life support, they go to rescue calls first if we don't have an ambulance, then we bring in ambulance from another town and do the transport. This will allow us just to be able to keep one crew in while the first ambulance is going in, and we still have the engine there ready to respond in the next call. So it's very needed, we're excited about it, we believe we're going to get there this year with our recruitment. Once again, putting all the pressure on the HR team to get those six people on board this year. The last thing we're excited about, the youth fire academy, this is, this is right borrowed from the police department, very successful. We see it as a future recruiting program as well. This gives us the opportunity to get our Warren students in the fire station over summer, working with a camp. We're right now working on it, we have a lieutenant that's working on building the program out. We might be looking a little bit different in the police, not going with a five-day week, we may be doing it over six, seven, eight weeks in a row. But this, with our staffing levels being up, we're able to get back in the community and start doing a little bit more of the public education. Things that we had to put on the back burner because we were just so worried about going to calls. This is going to allow us to engage the community again. This is the first program we're planning on rolling out this year, we're hoping to continue on and go there. We actually may have a partnership with the police coming down the line for some other pub ed. Chief and I have been talking about that on the side, so we may have some other stuff that we're able to fit in this year's budget. But we're very excited this budget's getting us to the staffing level we need, so these programs can be implemented. So I'll pass the mic to the next.
Thanks, Chief.
All right. Moving on to public works, so we'll start with our streets division. In-house, we include forestry, construction, and lights and signs in the street division. This year, we have, we are down 1.88% versus prior year. I believe most of that is attributed to the fact that we're going to reduce the maintenance worker, or the utility position, and then increase the maintenance worker one, which shifts all the expense to utility. To date, we've seen approximately 19 inches of snow through 14 different events, using about 2,000 tons of salt, and 20,000 gallons of beet heat for a total cost of $610,500. So pretty successful, although if you talk to the guys, they say it's not nearly successful enough. So they're begging for more overtime over there. We've also kept up on our routine maintenance programs, that includes pothole patching, curb repairs, sidewalk repairs and replacement, light repairs, signs that are hit by trucks, cars, anybody, vandalism removal, et cetera. We've been designated as Tree City USA again for another year and obtained the growth award. We've continued the mulch delivery program, which has been very successful. In fact, we've gotten, I think, at least a handful of calls already asking if we're doing it, you know, it's March, it's March, are you guys doing it again? So we'll be getting ready to do that, coming probably more like April this year than it was in March. Material bins are under construction, and the Salt Dome Roof Award, thank you, you did that earlier for the roof, so we'll take care of that yet this year, all a very productive year at Public Works. Moving towards next year, some of the goals that we have are to continue our urban forest management, so that includes tree trimming, removals, replacements, and EAB treatments. We have some building maintenance items that continue, so now we're looking at trench drains in the, like, the garage, the fleet garage area, because we haven't touched those yet, I think they're the last ones. Removing excess stairways so that we can get more space in the fleet shop, so that plow trucks can pull in with the plows actually still on the front of them, so they can fit in the building. Also looking at generators for critical facilities, we've been doing that for multiple years, and that's going to continue. And we also intend to continue our streetlight wire replacements to put conduit in the ground in places where the direct buried wire has created a lot of faults. And then we're going to be breaking up our LED replacements for streetlights, so some of the, if we wait all until they're out of life, we'll have a huge expense coming all at once. So we're looking at a multi-phase plan, 10% a year for 10 years. However, if a grant becomes available, because we've heard some things that there might be one, then we would come before you and pursue that. I think that's all I have for streets. So moving down to utility, in our utility division, we maintained another year of excellent customer service, no shocker there. So delivering clean drinking water to all of our residents and providing sanitary sewer conveyance that leaves the home. This year, some of our projects included the annual fire hydrant replacement program, so we tackle about 10 hydrants that no longer have replacement parts available to them, and we, so we do complete replacements on those. Otherwise, as long as they're keep making parts, we keep swapping those out when we can. This year, some of our projects also included discussions that we've had, I think, over many budget years, about our SCADA optimization project. So we finally got that master plan completed and have a roadmap on what we need to do systematically to get our SCADA system ready for the next generation of technology and system efficiency. We've also worked to continue to replace outdated generators. This year, we hit the one at Lee Avenue Lift Station, and there's more coming on that, like I mentioned before. Continued progress in being, is being made on the EPA regulations, so the lead, lead and copper rule, as well as the Lead Service Line Replacement and Notification Act, so So, there's additional, um, steps now that we have to take, unfunded mandates and whatnot. So, now, when we go to homes to take samples, it's not just taking a one-liter sample first thing in the morning. It's taking a one-liter, a two-liter, a three-liter, a four-liter, and a five-liter. And the first and the fifth go to the IEPA. So, it's a lot more intensive. Um, and then, making sure people don't use the water before we start collecting the samples has always been a struggle, so we'll continue to do that. We also have to go to every daycare and every school and take samples now, which wasn't something in the past. And notification processes are changing, so when, um, a water main replacement project takes place, we have to send out notifications about lead service lines and the potential for lead, uh, release after a project takes place. So, just all the things that are coming down the pipeline from the IEPA and the US EPA. Uh, additionally, we plan to make progress. I know I talked about this last year, but this year, I mean it, uh, for meter replacement projects. So, it's a big, it's a big project to take on. And, um, we've actually been able to look at other communities and how they've done it recently. Um, specifically, one that not only uses our CityWorks software, but also uses Munis. And so, it's like a real good vantage point that we have to, to get some lessons learned from them. Um, and they have a consultant that's been able to, um, tackle way more accounts than we currently have. So, I'm, I'm looking forward to potentially moving forward on that this next year. Uh, next, we have Fleet Services. So, finally, in Fleet, uh, we have a staff of three mechanics and one fleet administrator, and make it their priority to keep the village moving forward, pun intended. Um, all vehicles are driven by, uh, police, uh, Public Works, and Community Development, so they're all under their care. This past year, some of the key results included procurement of eight patrol vehicles, one ET vehicle, one unmarked detective vehicle, the replacement of the totaled vehicle last year that was rear-ended by the intoxicated driver. Um, they also helped to purchase two skid steers for Public Works, two different attachments for our Forestry Division, which is the stump ax and the brush cutters, um, as well as those attached to our existing equipment, so that was super helpful. Um, and two of our smaller plow trucks were procured. Additionally, when our chipper experienced major engine failure, they were able to have it replaced in time to tackle work for the rest of the season, so it didn't. Although we fell behind, we were able to catch up last year. Um, and finally, we've been working with a consultant to have the Fuel Island replacement designed so we can go out to bid yet this spring, hopefully. Um, we do have to contest with some permitting issues because we are in the floodplain. Um, so, uh, we still have to tackle some of that. Um, on top of all that, we continue to do repairs and maintenance requests that come in that address anything from accidents to oil changes and everything in between. Uh, so, with that, I'll turn it back over to Brian.
So, just getting into the, uh, the different funds now, um, so, we'll move a li, little bit quicker here. Um, so, the nine-one-one fund, one-twenty-one, uh, total budget of one point two million. Uh, that's down twelve percent from last year. Uh, this fund really acts as the go-between, between, 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 uh, the, the nine, the ETSB fund, our joint ETSB fund, and the General Fund. Um, again, this, this fund will close out with, uh, with the, the Joint Dispatch Center, Countywide Dispatch. So, this closes it out. Also included here is, um, the million-dollar loan to LakeCom if needed. Um, again, at this point, it doesn't look like it's gonna be needed, um, because they're moving along pretty quick and still have some plenty of money that, that they have, uh, from the first loan. So, I think, I don't, I don't know that they'll need that, but the budget is there if it's, if it is needed. Uh, that fund interacts with this fund. This is our joint ETSB fund with Zion. Again, small, small number here, uh, two-hundred-and-five-thousand-dollar budget. It's just three months of activity that we budgeted for next year. Um, assuming that it closes, uh, at the end of, end of July, final distribution, uh, just comes in, goes out to, uh, Gurnee and Zion. Um, it'll close, and then, projected ending balance, obviously zero, because we'll close it at the end of the year. Motor fuel tax fund, so this is obviously restricted monies that come in. We can only use it on the road program. Uh, next year's program is one point four million, up only eighty thousand. Um, pretty steady revenue stream here. We get estimates from the IML what, what this revenue stream's gonna be, uh, every year. So, it stays pretty consistent. Um, and we only use it on the road program, try to keep a million bucks in there, um, just in case. That helped us like during COVID when we were able to maintain the, uh, you know, still maintain some resurfacing, even though we didn't have quite the, the surpluses or, or homeowners sales tax took a dip too. Um, we were able to use this, uh, this reserve to keep that program up to, up to speed. Um, so, we'll have nine-hundred-and-fifteen thousand in there at the end of next year, projected. Uh, one-twenty-four, this is the PD Restricted Revenue Fund. Uh, so, this is forfeited assets, I guess, that come back to the police department. Uh, total, they can only use it on certain, certain police-related activities. A hundred-and-eighty-four thousand total budget, that's down thirty-five thousand. Um, a couple of things that they're looking at next year. We use it for canine training, uh, vehicle we have in there, evidence lockers, and some e-bikes. So, yeah, those are in there next year. Again, projected to have a hundred-and-seventy-two thousand at the end of next year. It's restricted, we can only use it on certain things, so, uh, when you need something, this is one of the places we'll look, see if we can buy it out of here first. Economic Development Fund, this is where we house our rebate agreements, uh, grant program, and the Economic Development Reserve. Uh, we moved this out of the General Fund last year, last year. Uh, total budget, three point one million, uh, down three, just three hundred thousand. That's just based on, on rebate agreements. Uh, we have the Great Wolf rebate agreement at one point four, that's budgeted at one point four next year. Uh, if you recall, that's a twenty-two million dollar max. We paid out six point one to date, expires in twenty-twenty-nine. Uh, Gurnee Mills, four hundred and fifty thousand, that's a couple of different ones. Um, Hobby Lobby Boot Barn, Primark, uh, potentially another one. Uh, we have the Six Flags one, that actually expires this year. The final payment will go out next year. Um, so, that was four million over seven years, so we'll end up paying out roughly eight-hundred-and-fifteen thousand projected, eight-hundred-and-sixteen thousand projected. Uh, we also have budgeted in here, three hundred thousand for the Economic Development Reserve. This is, again, during the year. Something comes up, Ellen wants to pull the trigger on it, she's got some money here. If not, it stays in the fund. Uh, stays, the fund has already accumulated seven-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand or projected to at the end of, end of next year, um, and that stays in there. In case we wanna pull the trigger, something comes up, again, this is a source we can go to first before going to the General Fund. Also included in here, uh, other rebates, so the Cooper Sock, uh, Woody GMC, McCullough, Carwise Mueller. Uh, we have the Capital Grant Program, Lake County Visitors Bureau rebate. Uh, all that stuff kinda is housed in this, in this fund. Funded by a transfer from the General Fund, so when you see those, that transfers out, that's part of what comes out of the General Fund into here. Capital Fund, obviously, this is non-water and sewer capital. Uh, twelve point two, twelve point nine million dollar total, uh, up two and a half million, uh, capital plan. Uh, I got another slide that'll go over just some, some changes, some small changes to it. Transportation System, eight and a half million, stormwater management, two hundred, two hundred K. Uh, vehicles and equipment. Uh, and here, this, this is just fire, police, and Public Works is paid out of Fleet Services Fund. Um, so, you'll see fire vehicles are pa, paid out of here for a million. Police and Public Works, we transfer money from here to Fleet Services, one point two million. Uh, four hundred thousand in technology, one and a half in building improvements. And then, after all that, largest capital plan on record, we still, still gonna have about two point one million in here. Again, uh, that we can use, keep a capital plan going in downtimes when we don't have a surplus or something else happens. Golf Course Fund, uh, here, we just, really just budget a small amount every year in case the clubhouse needs some maintenance or something. Uh, so, we had twenty-five thousand, last year, we budgeted, I think, sixty-five or something, uh, because they had some windows that they needed to replace. Um, amusement tax revenue comes back in here, it's about seventy-five thousand a year. Uh, we do have the pending irrigation system, so we wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, the, the surplus transfers uh, that we had slated originally, um, two point seven, yeah, two point seven-five, uh, to the Capital Fund and then, one point two-five to the Water and Sewer Fund. With the savings from the, the Stony Island Project, uh, we have that additional, savings was about a million dollars. So, we have that additional million dollars, a million of the one point two-five, uh, that we could potentially redirect towards the irrigation system. So, get a jumpstart on, three million was the latest episode?
I mean, three million was the estimate a couple of years ago, so.
Three, three and a half?
We keep harping about the water mains. Nick doesn't have any projects designed and ready to go. If he did, had another million dollars of the projects lined up, we'd probably pull the trigger on that, have to get some more Casals onboard, but that's not the case at this point. So, the thought was leave that transfer at one point two fi, five million dollars, take a million to the Golf Course Fund, put that in there with this irrigation system, uh, expense anticipated, not this coming year, but, uh, next year. And then, the remaining two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get some additional projects designed. So, if we come across this situation, again, we've got something sitting on the shelf that we can invest some money, um, underground throughout the community, not a bittersweet. So, that was our initial thought after we put the budget together, and then Nick hits his pricing in, and it comes in way under. So, some changes on the fly. Um, so, think about that. Um, let me know if you've got any concerns or questions on it. Um, maybe touch base the next board meeting, uh, before, um, the actual public hearing on the budget to make sure everyone's comfortable with that or not comfortable with it, um, and then move forward from there, so.
Uh, funding for the, for the irrigation system's likely gonna come from some kind of surplus next year anyway. So, it's just really shifting years. Uh, projected ending fund balance in here, five hundred and fifteen thousand next year. That's, it, that doesn't count any, any change in this, in the surplus transfer. So, five hundred and fifteen, uh, would be in addition to the million we would transfer, uh, if that's, if that's the route we take. Water and Sewer Fund, Water and Sewer Capital Fund here, combined, uh, fourteen point two million dollar budget. Uh, obviously, charges for service, the largest, um, source of revenue here, up four hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Uh, use kind of a three-year average use, usage assumption, and then, uh, included in the budget is a six percent rate assumption. Um, obviously, that'll be a separate decision, um, on the night of the budget. Uh, contractual services, up sixty thousand. Uh, we know Jawa's increasing their, their rate by five percent. Uh, they have a multi-year rate, uh, rate program in place, so we know that, that's already a given. Um, capital, five point seven million, we saw a little bit of that tonight. We know that, that number's going down because of, uh, because of that, that pricing that came in. Projected to end next year at four and a half. So, if moving the, changing the transfer would not affect that four and a half because you're changing it on the revenue and the expenditure side, so, um, it would stay. We'd still have a fund balance of four and a half next year. And then, just a reminder, when we were talking about rate, the rate adjustment, uh, where we're at with the other Jawa communities, uh, still second lowest. Um, I did a little bit of research at Volle Mayhave, or is looking to change how they take it off property tax and put it in a, in a monthly fee. Still, still researching that piece, so I didn't want to include it in here, but that would make us the lowest if, if, uh, if what I read today ranks true, or I got call in to somebody. Um, that would, that would move us to the lowest. Um, so, obviously, with the six percent moves us to that second, uh, kinda white bar there, third from the left, and then, if everybody else did nothing and we did six percent through twenty-thirty, we'd end up about halfway. Health Insurance Fund, so this gets funded through transfers from the General Fund, the Water Fund, uh, and the Fleet Services Fund, five point seven million dollar budget. Uh, tran, the operating transfers are four point seven of that, and then, employee premiums make up about one point one million. Obviously, health, dental, life is all paid out of here. We've talked about the transition to the government pool from the self-insured model. Um, probably won't see any of that savings this, this year, or very little of it this year because that transition won't happen until January one of twenty-six, just based on when they can, they could onboard us. Uh, ending balance here is, again, negative, balances against the General Fund. So, the General Fund wouldn't have to make up anything here. Five hundred and eighty-four thousand negative, uh, projected at the end of next year. Um, in a full year, the projected savings, based on the figures we got now, is about five hundred thousand. So, we could make that up fairly quick, if the savings comes to fruition. Fleet Services Fund, three point eight million total here, uh, up six hundred and one thousand or eighteen point nine percent. Again, this is transferred in, uh, from the operating funds, and then, police and Public Works vehicles are trapped, are, uh, this transferred in from those capital funds. Um, fuel sales, uh, makes up part of the revenue sources here, um, but it's primarily, uh, on the expenditure side, it's fleet maintenance and capital. Uh, at the end of next year, projected to have eight hundred and twenty-three thousand fund balance. That's after we pull, pull it down by five hundred thousand this year. Remember, we had that four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, um, reduction here in that one chart in the beginning. Uh, so, that's after we, after we reduce it by four hundred and ninety-nine thousand. And then, Police and Fire Pension Funds, I'll just hit these quick. Uh, Police Pension Fund, five point two million dollar budget. Again, we, we try to do a best, best guess here on how this is gonna turn out. Uh, but, five point two million dollar total budget, it's up seven point nine percent. Funding sources here, investment income, which are now, uh, one state entity. Shouldn't say state entity. Um, it's a, it's a, a joint entity by all the, uh, pension funds that control investment, the investment, uh, activity. Uh, Employee Contributions is another one, and then, Employer Contributions is the third investment and the, the third funding source for these, uh, for pension funds. Our funded ratio is about seventy-seven point one percent. State average is right at sixty. Uh, the actual required contribution for this upcoming year is two point three million. Uh, included in the budget is two point eight-five, which is just three percent over last year. Uh, so, we'd be overfunding again by about five hundred and forty-three thousand. Yeah, projected ending net assets, eighty-four and a half million here in the Police Pension Fund. Again, we don't have any investment control over, over this, it's all by an independent board. Uh, this chart shows ten years of, uh, funding, funding from the village. The green is what we're required to do, the blue is what we did in addition to what we're required to. So, uh, I wanna say it was twenty, nineteen, twenty, twenty, uh, when we started to see it start to dip, and then, we said, rather than take that savings, we'll just slowly increase it by three percent, like the cost of living, basically, and then, uh, you know, keep, keep that steady, steady budget and overfund. Same thing on the fire side. Total budget here, three point two million, uh, that's down just slightly. Same funding sources, uh, ratio's eighty point two percent. On a two million dollar required contribution, we're, we're kicking in two point four. So, overfunding by three hundred and seventy-four thousand, uh, projected net assets here, ending the year at sixty-eight point one million. And again, the same chart, you can see the blue is what we've overfunded. Uh, just a reminder on the capital plan, twenty point nine million. Uh, transportation system in total, nine point nine. Buildings and improvements, two point one, water and sewer five. Um, vehicles and equipment, three point two, stormwater management, two hundred thousand. Uh, just a few changes that we'll, we'll, uh, have to make from the capital plan presentation or that are included in here. Uh, we added five hundred thousand to design Fuller Road, uh, added seventy-five thousand for the gatekeeper, the doors, securitas at the police department. Uh, we, we kinda managed that over two fiscal years, so we had to, um, adjust funds there. And then, I added, uh, the, uh, two hundred and ten thousand for a lift station panel that I missed the first time around, so, um, that, that was on me. Debt, uh, IEPA loan for the nose towers, all we have outstanding. Uh, original loan, just over five point one four million. Uh, it's a rate, fixed rate of one point eight-four percent, terms twenty years. We're paying it off, uh, we're paying enough to have it paid off in ten years. So, the final payoff date will be, uh, May twenty-ninth, twenty-thirty. Uh, at the end of next year, the total outstanding will be just under two point seven million. Uh, pending items for the final budget, uh, just some decision points. Uh, adjust that capital transfer, do we wanna do the million to the Golf Course Fund that Pat talked about? And then, um, I gotta lower the utility improvement expense accordingly, based on the, the bids that came in that was approved tonight. Next steps, uh, second workshop, if, if needed, March seventeenth. April seventh will be the public hearing and approval. Uh, on that night, there'll be three things to approve, the budget, the surplus transfer and the annual fee resolution with the change for water rate. That's all I got.
All right, so, I'll start with my rights. Any questions about the budget, Trustee O'Brien?
All three for police. The clinical social worker, I'll just list all three, and then you can tell me. Clinical social worker, is that different from the coast program? Um, with the new in-car flocks, will you be able to drive through, like, big parking lots and see if there's bad guy's cars in there? And then, the draft, draft one, Exxon, is that protected from people breaking into our system? Maybe that's actually a question down the road.
Sure, those are all good questions. Uh, so, um, to kinda go backwards, the draft one, um, yes, Exxon has a, a very secure system. And not only is it, um, the way they have it set up is that, once it transcribes it and you transfer it into a report, there's nothing left on the Exxon server from that report. So, um, that way, for FOIAs or anything else, there's nothing there. It's either in your report, or you have the video, and that's it. Um, so, uh, when it comes to the fleet three cameras that are in the squads, uh, yes, they do because we've, uh, well, they pick up our squad cars as we're driving through our own parking lot. So, they do pick up, uh, they have a pretty wide-angle lens, and so, they're catching, uh, license plates that are, um, that are parked. Um, and, uh, your last question was, uh, the social worker.
In coast.
So, currently, the social worker that is in coast is just a, I, I don't believe that one is a clinical social worker. Those have been, uh, uh, pretty hard to get right now because, uh, with the grant funding, there's limitations on how much they can, they can pay. Um, and that has been the biggest hurdle that we've seen for the last five or six years. And I think that's, uh, also a hurdle that, uh, a neighboring town that is using grant funding, um, is finding out also. So, our goal is to, uh, to get a, a clinical social worker. Um, we think that that would probably, uh, best suit our needs here. Um, but, they've gone through several. Uh, their goal in coast is to get a clinical social worker, but they just haven't got there yet. They're also, you know, they have strict hours of, uh, like, nine to five, eight to four type of thing. And, uh, they're doing, uh, six agencies, so they're going around to six different agencies where if we had our own in-house one, not only will they be able to follow up from, like, victims of domestic violence or child abuse, uh, but they're also responding to officers, uh, at, at odd hours and times, just like officers are, are, you know, in our, in our town, so. There's a little bit of a difference between us and coast then.
Thank you, super helpful, thanks.
Trustor Thompsonson, now, Trustee Ross.
Just a comment, um, thinking about the transfer. I think that putting it into the golf fund would be a good idea because it's gonna be a shack when you find out just how much it's gonna cost, and maybe that'll lessen it a little bit next year.
Yeah, and I mean, it can always be moved out as easy as it's moved in. If something more critical pops up and the irrigation system has to be delayed, we can move that money back out, so, yeah.
Trustee Woodside.
No questions.
Trustee Balmas.
No, not at this time.
Trustee Garner.
I had a question on this drone, um, you know, what's our confidence level that this thing won't fail? I, I could just see thing falling out of the sky, hitting right on Grand Avenue, tying up things, uh, you know? And, and we get stories, you know, Mars has just landed, you know, so. Do these things crash? I mean, do, you know, what's the confidence level that they don't fail?
Uh, well, it, uh, it'll fly, probably fly better than being manned. Um, we do know that, um, a, a couple of things. Uh, number one, that, um, this is a, a tested vendor with this specific drone. Uh, we are not the first ones, we, we will be the first ones in this area to do drone as a first. Um, but, there's other, uh, agencies that have, uh, fully autonomous drones, um, that will, uh, go up on their own, right from the call without dropping a pin that goes right off the CAD call. Uh, and they will, uh, follow vehicles, whatever that, uh, needs to be done. But, we, the confidence level of them falling out of the sky is, uh, we don't see that happening. In fact, we use drones probably, um, if not every week now, um, at least several times a month. drones probably, if not every week now, at least several times a month, whether it's looking for a lost child, somebody running from a car, numerous things, you name it, we've used drones for it. And it's just supplementing manpower and helping out tremendously. We have crashed a drone in training when we were inside of a school when we first got it. And there's been, you know, during the, mostly, all of our accidents with the drones have happened during training exercises. But this takes the human error out of it. And really, what we're paying for is that software that lets it self-deploy and kind of maps out the whole airspace to make sure it doesn't hit anything. We're getting extra insurance.
No, I think, yeah, that.
They are covered under insurance, I asked away after.
That's what I'm talking about. All right.
Okay, I just, I want to thank just Pat and Brian and the staff for obviously your preparation. The reason why this, tonight goes the way it does is because of the effort you guys put in to this. And just on behalf of myself and the board, just thank you very much. It's super professional, very informative, have a high level of trust that it's another good year ahead of us. So I really appreciate all that effort, it makes a difference. And I think there's many villages that have budget meetings that don't even remotely resemble this. So I'm just thankful that we do.
I'll thank everybody after the budget's passed, so.
I wasn't asking you to thank anybody, Pat, I'm just, I'm taking care of the thanking part.
If anything comes up between now and the next meeting, or now and April 7th, when we have the public hearing, let us know. It's a lot of information to digest. As time goes by, something may jump in your head, so either give me a call, give Brian a call. It's still in draft format, so there's still time to make changes to the budget, so like I said, just let us know.
So no workshop too, was it? Right?
Doesn't sound like we need a workshop too. So if someone changes their mind, let me know before next Wednesday when I'm putting the next, next package together. Otherwise, we will just have the public hearing on April 7th, so Brian will run through high level again, cover any changes that may have taken place between now and that meeting, and then have it on the regular agenda for approval with fiscal year start in May 1, so.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Motion by Trustee Balmus, second by Trustee Garner, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.